Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is December first, two thousand and twenty five. The regular meeting, the county implementation board for the blueprint for Maryland. We have a number of important issues to cover today. Before we get started, I want to thank our outstanding staff, all of the work that they've accomplished over the last few days, especially during the holidays, Thanksgiving. It's an awful lot of work to accomplish those in a short period of time. I'm not sure if we have any summaries of meetings that we can have to approve at this point in time. That I'm exactly doing.
We do, Mr. Chair. We have the meeting summary from last week. Well, it feels like last week, the last meeting on November twentieth. And I would just, for the record, acknowledge that all board members are present.
Okay. All right, their motion to approve the summaries from my last meeting?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, move the proper second. Any unreadiness? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye.
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 In opposition? None, here are none, so approved. All of our members are here. I think that we are now prepared to go through a number of things today. Hopefully, we can get through this in an order that allows everyone the maximum amount of time to speak of any and every issue that we have before us. I believe that the outline that we presented would afford the maximum opportunity for people to express their views related to our summaries today and how we will proceed. The first thing that I think that I want to do is turn it over to our executive director. Just sort of give us the status of the various items that were coming for us so that we could have that background information in order to proceed accordingly. So, Miss Executive Director, if you're willing to do that, I think we would prepare to do so. I want to get right into it.
Sure, sure, Mr. Chair. The very first item we have is an update on the career ladders. Because we do have some, we have received some additional information from some LEAs over the past few days, and so we do have several career ladders for your approval today before you take up the release of funds decisions. Can you go to the next slide and the next slide? And let me ask Libby Diamond, who is our pillar two analyst, if she could run through the status of the career ladders.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As of today, we have been able to approve, recommend nineteen career ladders for the board's approval. And today, we will bring three more to the board for recommended approval. And we do still have two LEAs that are in negotiations, and that is Baltimore City and Prince George's County. So today, I will present Howard County, Montgomery County, and Saint Mary's County for recommended approval.
I'm going to show move. The second to the motion?
Second.
Move the proper second. All right. Are there any unreadiness to the motion? Not? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
In opposition? None? The motion is approved on the career ladders. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will just add that so we have received some updates from Prince George and Baltimore City in the past few weeks, but neither of them are complete. So those are the remaining two LEAs, and we will take up a motion regarding that later.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so then if we could, thank you. Just a really quick wanted to just remind the public around the blueprint release of funds and what that means. This is a process that the board engages in each year to determine whether funds that are automatically withheld from each LEA every year, and that is twenty-five percent of their new blueprint funds or their increase in state funding for education in the blueprint programs, is automatically withheld. And the board has to decide whether to release those funds or not. And on the screen, beginning in this fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which is the year that we're in, the board's decision is the board is to consider whether it has received a recommendation from MSD, the CTE Committee, or an expert review team, or if the board determines that either a school system or an individual school has made sufficient progress on their implementation plan or taken appropriate steps to improve student performance. So that is a new provision beginning this year that is part of the board's consideration for releasing funds. Next slide. And if the board is not going to release funds or is not prepared to release funds, the board has to give an initial warning by December first each year. And so that is the purpose of this agenda item for today's meeting. And then that's the initial warning that funds may not be released. And then by February first, the board has to make a final decision on whether to release those funds. And then there are dates in the statute regarding the timing of, by June first, the board has to notify the comptroller and the state superintendent regarding the release of funds or not to release funds. So we are in the first part of that process with the December first date. And then, next slide. For this year, the twenty twenty-five release of funds, the items that the board is considering as part of this decision include the things that we've been talking about for several months now regarding the career counseling MOUs, which all LEAs have met that requirement now. The career ladders, which we just went over the status of those, so we have twenty-two are now approved and two are not yet approvable. And then last, at the last meeting, we talked about the comprehensive math plans, and each LEA has submitted their math plan to MSD and isn't either has, is working on revising it or is in a place where their plan is ready to move forward. So we'll be waiting for the final information from MSD on the math plan approvals and take that up at that time. And then the last two items on the slide relate to progress on implementation plan and/or student performance, which is part of the conditions or the provisions in the law beginning this year. And minimum school funding, meaning the minimum school funding policy requirement, which is also part of their implementation plans. And so I wanted to share, and the board asked me to share a little data around more information around those last two topics. And we have some charts to show you and everyone. And can you make that a little bigger? Maybe not very much bigger, I guess, because it's on the screen. So the first slide, the first graph chart here is looking at English Language Arts proficiency across the LEAs. And this is comparing the baseline year, which is the twenty-one, twenty-two school year or fiscal year twenty twenty-two, with the most recent data, which is from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And looking at growth or progress between those two points of time around reading proficiency for all students. And this is, of course, using the state's MCAP results. And you can see we have, we're showing the LEAs in their rank order across the state in terms of proficiency, change in proficiency scores. You can see Dorchester has increased by over twenty-two percentage points during that time period, up to forty-nine point three percent. And you can see that, I think, seven LEAs had double-digit increases in their ELA, English Language Arts proficiency scores, which includes Allegheny, Calvert-Kent, Baltimore City, Wycomico, and Frederick. And then as you move down, we have a number of LEAs that were also above the state average. You can see the state average increase in ELA proficiency scores is four point two percentage points. And then we have eight LEAs that are below that state average. And two LEAs that actually went backwards or negative in terms of their proficiency scores. Montgomery County, which decreased by three point five percentage points, and Queen Anne's County, which decreased by seven point four percentage points. So that is, and as you know, the AIB and MSD have been extremely focused on literacy and particularly the third grade metric. This is one of the aligned metrics that the board and the State Board of Education have adopted. So that is one of the major focus areas for the blueprint. Moving on to math, we have a similar display of data for grade five math performance. And here you can see that there are fewer LEAs making double-digit increases. We have three LEAs with ten or more percentage point increase over that same period, time period, fiscal year twenty, or school year twenty-five and school year twenty twenty-two. In, for math, the state average is higher, though. Six point one percentage point increase between twenty-two and twenty-five. And you can see seven LEAs plus the three double-digit that are above the state average. And then you can see the number of districts that are below the state average, which is more than, more than half. And again, we do have two districts that went backwards or had negative change in proficiency. Queen Anne's County at point one percentage points and Somerset County at point six percentage point decrease. And I should also point out, in each column for twenty-two and twenty-five are their, their overall proficiency rate. And then, of course, the last column is the change. And then the third topic that we wanted to share some data around is minimum school funding. And as a reminder, the, under the blueprint law, LEAs are what we call coding their expenditures at the school level for nine programs, up to nine programs that are part of the blueprint. And you can see in the table, the nine programs at the top, foundation, compensatory education, multilingual learners, special education, concentration of poverty, comparable wage index, college and career readiness, transitional supplemental instruction, and then a public pre-K. And what this chart is showing is the percentage of their fiscal year twenty twenty-five or school year twenty-four, twenty-five blueprint expenditures that they have coded at the school level. And you can see we have many districts that have, you know, coded, you know, a significant amount of their expenditures at the school level. And then in red are those programs that.
Yes, let me interrupt one second because you don't want to listen to this, may not understand what we are talking about when we say coding. Could you give an explanation of what we're talking about here?
Sure, it's, it's, it's complicated, but essentially it is identifying how they are spending their the dollars that they're receiving for each of these programs. So let's say foundation, how those monies are being spent and allocating the portion that is being spent at each school on behalf of the students in that school to that school.
So why is that important?
Under the blueprint, the law requires at least seventy-five percent of most of the programs and a hundred percent of concentration poverty and public pre-K to be following students to their schools to, you know, essentially ensure that the the students that are attending schools, their schools are receiving the resources that the formulas are providing to educate those students.
And we provided a timeframe in which they can do that, and we adjusted that. So the explicit of the timeframe related to the numbers we see on the screen is what?
The, the board and the State Board of Education adopted a joint implementation policy that gives LEAs essentially a three-year runway to meet the requirement. Fiscal year twenty-five, which is what this data is, is what is the first year of reporting. And this, the policy calls on LEAs to make a good faith effort. And then they're required to meet, unless they receive a waiver, they're required to meet the minimum school funding requirement for each program by fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. And for the year in between, for fiscal year twenty-six, they basically have to close the gap between where they are and a hundred percent by half. So there's a three years for LEAs unless they receive a waiver to meet the requirement.
Okay, and so the zeros that we see on the chart reflects in those categories, those jurisdictions that have not coded or have implemented appropriate funding in those areas. And this is the red that you see on the chart, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, this data here is for fiscal year twenty twenty-five expenditures, which is fiscal year twenty-five is over, so this reflects what they actually did. We have one other chart that shows what has been budgeted for fiscal year twenty-six.
Just to be clear on this, Rachel, the zeros don't represent that zero dollars were spent for the, those categories of students. That means it's unclear what amount was spent for that category of students because the data was not reported by the LEA?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, this is reflects the data that the LEAs have, have reported into the Power School system. And so in, I mean, without the, having the data, we can't say for sure how they're spending their money. But, but it doesn't necessar, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that. It just, it most likely means that they haven't coded the data to reflect how they're spending that money at that school.
Presumably, some, presumably some portion of the money was spent in support of those students, but we just don't know what amount because it was not, it, it, it wasn't gone, gone through and identified by the school district.
It hasn't been coded yet. Yeah, exactly.
Thanks for the explanation, Member Manko, because there are some schools who've indicated that they've done a better job than the zeros reflected, but they simply have not reflected that in the necessary paperwork and described how they've coded so that we could verify that. So it may not be as bad as it looks on this chart, but we have no way of knowing unless we have the code and reflect for the staff to see that data.
And that's how, and that is, and I'll just add, you know, ultimately, that is how LEAs will demonstrate that they are meeting the requirement or the extent to which they are meeting the requirement is that they have to have coded their expenditures to show what they're spending at the school level for each of the programs.
Okay, any further questions, comments?
Yes, I have a quick question. So just, just remind us, Madam Executive Director, the standard that we are to use in this fiscal year is that the LEAs have made a good faith effort?
For minimum school funding, yes.
For minimum school funding.
Yes, that is what you adopted.
It's not that, it's not that they have, have had to meet minimum school funding.
Correct.
That's fiscal twenty-seven.
Correct.
Right.
And there is, there is a different calculation for it for fiscal year twenty-six as well. So there is a requirement for fiscal year twenty-six, but for twenty-five, but it's not the.
Which is, and we're, we're focused on the expectation for fiscal twenty-five?
Correct, which is good faith effort.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I, I think, I apologize because I cut you off before you explain this chart, but it, it, can you explain how this chart is different from the previous one that we just saw?
Sure. So the previous chart was for fiscal year twenty-five or the twenty-four, twenty-five school year actual expenditures. So that's done. This chart is, shows what the LEAs have budgeted for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And in, and the, the data sets are different, so it actually, for, at least for most, if not almost all of the LEAs, they actually have to code the data separately. So there's one set of data that is their actual expenditures, which is the previous chart. There's another set of data, which is their budgeted, their budget or their budgeted expenditures in this case. And this, this data needs to be coded separately. And so this shows same, same concept to show what percent of the, each program's expenditures have been budgeted at the school level. And again, we have just in red shown the programs that are at zero percent budgeted at the school level.
So for example, Carroll County has budgeted zero percent of fund for multilingual learners. Is that correct?
At the school level.
At the school level.
At the school level.
I mean, they could conceivably be spending it, but they haven't budgeted.
Well, and they, right, that, and also it, if it's not budgeted at the school level, then it is budgeted pretty much always at the central office level. So they, there, those expenditures are, are just right now showing up in central office and not budgeted out to the schools.
Got you.
And for multilingual learners, that, I mean, you can see most districts have, have budgeted a significant amount of their multilingual learner funds to the schools. But there are others that have, have smaller amounts. And this partly reflects sort of the service delivery model for multilingual learners that most LEAs think of it as a central office expense, and then teachers are, are sent to different schools to provide the instructional support. I see a number of hands, Mr. Chair. Can I go ahead and call on them? Member Lynch?
Yes, thank you. So I think this is, it's helpful to understand the difference between the two charts. I think this chart, looking now, but also looking into future years, is an incredibly important chart because what we heard from many of our districts was even sometimes when we budget, there are things, there are unexpected things that happen throughout the school year. And I think as part of our responsibility is the accountability and implementation board, when a district would want to apply for a waiver because they aren't able to actually meet their budgeted, their actual funds, to be able to go back and look and to verify that they actually had even budgeted for it, I think is an important decision point for us as the board to consider. So I just, you know, I want to encourage the districts to complete this task because then it makes sort of the waiver process, it makes it easier for us. I'm, I'm more concerned if we're not even budgeting for money to go there than how we can actually make sure that the funds are actually going there. And that is part of the requirement under the law.
Thank you. Member Manko?
Yeah, just to provide some clarity for the public, there's certain counties where the budgeted amount is over a hundred percent. So if you could explain that, and then for Hartford County in career readiness, their budgeted amount is negative? So could you explain that as well?
For the first part of your question, some LEAs are, you'll also see in the special education column, a number of LEAs that have budgeted over a hundred percent and also spent over a hundred percent. And so the, the data is being reported by programs, so foundation, special education, et cetera. And there's a per people amount for each formula that LEAs receive, and there's a state share and a local share, but there's a per people total. And this is a, this data is being presented as a percentage of, of that total amount. But in, in many, in some cases, LEAs are spending other dollars that they receive in addition to that per people amount for that formula for that program or for, at the school level. And so that is what the over one hundred, hundred percent or over it are, are reflecting. In terms of the Hartford County negative data, I'm going to actually ask our finance director, Alexandra Vernon, if she could provide that response.
Thank you so much. We are actually looking into more of the reasoning behind the negative amount. We have heard from MSD and the Power School team that there could be a error in the way that the LEAs are uploading some of their data that's not showing correctly. So we are working on getting that additional data, but it, it is based on what the LEAs provided as an upload to Power School. So that's the data we had to use and show.
I don't know. So we're, we are following up on that. Yep, we were very extremely curious about that as well. Member Quick McQueen?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, I just had a question because we know that this has all been a heavy lift for all of our LEAs. Um, so can we just share with members of the public, um, how and if, um, our LEAs receive technical assistance? To help them work through the MSF.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So we do have a technical assistance program. Um, to su- to provide support to LEAs for what we call resource allocation and, um. The, um, LEAs were offered the upper, all LEAs were offered the opportunity to participate in that technical assistance. Um, and, um. Uh, we had actually a couple of additional LEAs, um. Have a resource allocation partner is what we call. We have five resource allocation partners, uh, who are working with. Um, the LEAs to support both their, um, sort of helping them think through the, the coding. Uh, approach as well as strategies to meet the minimum school funding requirement and actually. Adjust how they're allocating, how they're using their resources, um, in order to meet the minimum school funding requirement and, um. If we can, um, Alex, if you can, um, share the, um. The list of LEAs that, um, have participated in the technical assistance. I know we had.
I don't think we need to go there at this point in time. I don't think we need to go, other than the fact that we know that some have taken advantage of, some have not. And as the question I asked a moment ago, uh, we have provided some assistance and support to try to help those. Who are participating in the program.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions right now? Vice Chair Kerwin.
Yes, uh, although I think the point has been made, I, I just want to reemphasize that. While there is a tremendous amount of technical accounting work that has to go on to, to. Uh, do, to, uh, do this budgeting and this coding. And, um, on the surface, it can look like busy work, but it is the reason. That this is being done is the expectation that the state. When the state allocates money for a specific purpose, concentration of poverty, say. That that money will actually be spent at the school or the bulk of that money will be spent at the school for that purpose. It is not discretionary money. It has to be spent for this purpose. And without this kind of accounting, there's no way of ensuring that that is, that is happening. And that's why, uh, this is, uh, is so important.
Thank you, and I will just say on the technical assistance, nearly all of the LEAs have participated in that program and, um. Um, it is, it is coming to a close as we are, um, no longer have the funds for technical assistance. Grants. Member Werner.
Thanks, I just wanted to also, um, highlight the work that has gone into this move so far. I, I learned through all of the progress monitoring meetings that, um, this was a large shift for many finance offices. And I learned that many districts across the state have very small finance offices. So I appreciate the work that has gone into this thus far from the teams across the state.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the data? Okay, Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed? Have we?
I'm sorry. Based on comments and discussion that we've had, uh, in the past and, um, looking at some of the information we have now before us. Looking at the chart and the things that some of the jurisdictions have, have not done. I decided to put together overarching recommendation or motion. That, um, that motion can be in effect amended. You have an opportunity to discuss it. Uh, amendment is the appropriate process for this as opposed to voting on this motion and then doing something. That, you know, way, uh, un- will, will, will change the, the thrust of the original motion. You can do that naturally, but that to me is by way of reconsideration. But before you vote on the motion itself, you have an opportunity to discuss it. Make whatever comments you may want to make, even amend that motion to provide other consideration of. Points that may be important to everyone. So we're gonna have two motions. The first one is the release of funds, and there's a caveat at the bottom of that motion. That talks about a letter going out to those engage, those included in this motion. Uh, that will be followed up as part of, uh, our comprehensive, uh, progress. Report efforts that we have. And I'd also mention something else is that we may have other questions and issues. That the board may feel are, are important throughout the year. That are not tied directly to any of the motions that we may have voted on today. So if there's information that we need, or we find that there are some discrepancies along the way. Uh, I indicated at the conferences that I attended that there will be some follow-up. And we may have additional questions, or we may want to call people back to explain things and to get further direction. So that does not preclude that, but that would be done on an ad hoc base, based on the challenges and difficulties we see. So, Madam Executive Director, if you don't mind, uh, my screen is relatively small. You can read. Um, the motion, and again, once the motion is on the table, uh, it can be amended. We can discuss it. Uh, changes, and you have an opportunity to make whatever points you like to make there.
Sure, uh, and we also. I'm sorry.
The first motion.
Yes, the first motion, uh, it's, it's, um, item three A, release of funds. And the motion, which is also on the screen, um, after careful consideration of the recommendations of the AIB staff. And based on the board's own independent review of all documents provided by the LEAs. The motion is for the board to find that the following LEAs have met all requirements and to authorize release of the fiscal year twenty twenty six. Blueprint funds that are automatically withheld by law. The board further moves to incorporate the progress monitoring summary doc. Actually, we're not, I'm sorry. We're not. I apologize. Um, we are not incorporating the summary documents in this motion, so I'm just gonna.
Yeah, we have to check that out.
Yeah, there you. Okay, all right, and, uh, so then the, um, there are twenty one LEAs. Um, and that includes, uh, Allegheny, Anna Rundle, Baltimore County, Calvert. Caroline, Carol, Cecil, Charles, Dorchester. Frederick, Garrett, Harford, Howard. Kent, Montgomery, Queen Anne's, Saint Mary's, Somerset. Washington, Wycomico and Worcester. And you can see, uh, below that, the note regarding Talbot, that will be a separate motion for approval. And then as the chair noted, there is also as part of this motion and further move that the board will send. The following LEAs a notice letter regarding concerns the board has regarding the issues noted below. And there are eight LEAs here. Caroline, which, uh, will receive a letter for. Um, minimum school funding, um, for school level expenditures and. For minimum school funding, this reflects the LEAs that had the zero percent in any program. On either chart, so either fiscal year twenty five or fiscal year twenty six. So that's Caroline. Carol would also receive a letter for that same reason. Um, Harford and Kent. Then next is Montgomery, which would receive a letter. Um, regarding their third grade English language art proficiency, which, um, was one of the two. Negatives in terms of change between school year twenty two and twenty five. Queen Anne's County would receive a letter for the, the minimum school funding. And third grade English language arts proficiency as well as, um. Fifth grade math and, um, this again, uh, reflects the, there were two LEAs. That had negative, uh, growth in their fifth grade math proficiency scores. Um, and then, um.
Worcester.
Somerset County, which is the other, um, district that had the negative results for math. And then finally Worcester, which, um, had zero percent in at least one program for school level expenditures.
Okay, I saw move in that motion now before a second of the second to the motion.
I see two hands up and can we, um, take the motion down for a minute? Just so that I can see people. Okay. Um, okay. The motion needs to be seconded before discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion.
So, um, Vice Chair Kerwin and then Member Lynch.
Okay, um, well, uh, f- first of all, l- l- let me say that, you know, we've had, seen a lot of data and. Um, uh, 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 with these various slides, and I, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact. That, uh, there has been a tremendous amount of progress with blueprint. Uh, we are seeing movement across the state and with a large number of, of, of LEAs. And, uh, in particular, for good reason, we focused on third grade English language, uh, arts of proficiency. Because we have a new policy in place, a, um, uh, new curriculum based on science of reading, reading. Teachers have been trained, we've had tutoring, et cetera, but it is new. I mean, it, it, we're sort of really in the first full year of, 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 of that, of that implement, implementation. Even with that, we've had, I think, seven schools increase. I just don't want this to go unnoticed. We've had seven schools increase the proficiency, uh, by ten percentage points in three years. That's remarkable. And we've had another, uh, eight or nine who've done at least five percent. So I mean, it, the, the, clearly the blueprint is making, having an impact, and that's very exciting and rewarding to see. However, I'm very concerned about a, a small number of LEAs where there isn't any progress. And in fact, two, in two cases, there are, um, two, uh, two LEAs that have gone backwards. And, um, there are three others that, um, uh, four others, I think. That are, are less than three percent over the past three years, so not even a percentage point a, 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 a year. And, you know, I, I, I'm fully agree that it's too early in this process to issue a warning letter. Because, you know, this is new and we've just started, uh, th- this, thi- this year. But, um, I, I think those six, the two that have gone backward. And the four that are under three percent, we need to have further a- interaction with them. To find out what it, why it is that they can't make, why are they not able to make progress rest, like the rest of the state? Now, we did have these, uh, um, uh, conferences with each of the LEAs, but we talked about a range of topics. We didn't have, didn't fo- focus solely on this English, English, English language art, so. Um, I, 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 I just want, um, to say my hope and expectation is. That we're gonna follow up with these, uh, with these, uh, LEAs. And have a serious discussion of what their challenges are and what needs to happen and when is it gonna happen? So that they can join the rest of the state in making the kind of progress we all want to see, uh, with, with the blueprint. Thank you for that, giving me a moment to. Bear my soul.
Member Lynch and then Member Manko.
Thank you, uh, for bearing your soul, Vice Chair Kerwin, and I, I share in, in everything that you say, and I actually. Um, struggle a little bit with the language of the motion because it says, we release all funds and we say that you have met the requirements. And yet, when we look at the data, very clearly, we've not met the requirements for some of these districts. Um, and I think that we need to have a deeper discussion around what sufficient progress is. I think I share those concerns that for those districts that make zero to three percent progress over three years. That's less than one percent progress per year, and as a reminder, the initial year was the first year after COVID. So we should expect to be seeing some sort of natural recoup gains anyway, and so those, those numbers are, are. I think small and concerning. I have even larger concerns, though, around districts that since that time. The numbers have gone backwards, um, and I want to continue to center around children. They're not just statistics. These are children in districts who every year, more and more children are not performing on grade level, and that's really concerning. It puts an incredible burden on the districts. We know that these are sort of bellwether metrics that show. Sort of how you're doing in third grade reading, lets us know a little bit about the, the potential uphill battle. That both a student will have and the district will have and getting that student and where they need to be. Um, you know, these are, are, are children that not on a grade level at third grade means they're gonna have to work extra hard. They're feeling like they're behind. They, it's gonna change the way they feel as a learner, the way they feel about school. And I think that, that, that we can't lose sight of the children in this conversation. I also think the statute is clear, and Rachel, I think you, Madam Executive Director, you. Beginning that says that beginning this year, we have to say whether or not there is sufficient progress to be met. We have to issue warnings. As the AIB, we don't create the parameters of our accountability. We have the responsibility to actually enact those. It doesn't mean a warning means that we have to withhold funds. I think to Vice, Vice, um, Chair's point, we should be looking for ways to help bring our LEAs forward faster. Because these are real children, um, but I, I am very concerned that we are not at least issuing warnings. For those districts who have gone, um, backwards in the last three years. Um, and, and, and Madam Executive Director, I would actually like to, um, support an, an amendment to this. But I would wait until every other, um, member has had their opportunity, or I can offer it now.
Well, it's just not to the executive records to me, the chair.
Sorry.
Um, you can offer it now at any point in time you feel comfortable.
Um, well, if that's the case, I would motion to, um, make an amendment to the motion to not approve the LEAs. That have declined in progress in both third grade ELA or fifth grade math, but to instead issue warnings to those LEAs.
Okay. Read the motion again, please make sure we got it.
Um, I, um, that's a good question. Um, I would, uh, make a motion to amend. The motion to not approve LEAs that have declined in progress in third grade ELA or fifth grade math. And to issue warnings to those LEAs instead.
Got you, thank you. Yeah, second to the motion. Yeah, second to the motion. As a lack of second, any other questions? Hands. Any other questions? Okay, let me go back again, because I want to pick up on both what. Okay, let me go back again because I want to pick up on both what uh remember, thank you, Member Lynch, for your question. I have the greater concerns as well in terms of the progress or the lack thereof in some places. Uh, it's a question of how we approach it, but there is a reckoning, I think, that is coming and it may come sooner than later. Um, my question also goes to what uh Member Kerwin stated. We will have some ongoing discussions that I think are pretty direct with uh some of the local districts. Uh, we also probably need to ensure that our state Board of Education is included therein because whatever we think about in terms of changes or adjustments, uh, it is left up to them to fully implement that and to oversee that. So that will be included as well. And so the motion here with the caveats at the bottom that those who are in the category of receiving a notice level as opposed to a warning. I I would ask Ms. Ditterer because someone people, some people may be confused about the two types of actions we're taking here to explain the difference between the letter and the warning. We're trying to do it for us so the public will understand the difference here.
Sure. Um, the board hasn't voted yet today on warnings, but um the warning is um is a process provided in statute. Um, Executive Director Heiss went over it earlier and the board is required to give a warning to any LEA that might be at risk of not having um the automatically withheld funds released before the end of the year. So that's warnings. Um, the notice letters are are just, um, they're not required by law or provided for by law, but they are um a tool that the that the board can use um to, you know, reflect concerns that it has.
All right. Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? You can comment on any section of this motion that you'd like. Thank you, Member Lynch. Okay, we're back now to the original motion. There any further unreadiness? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Um, I I oppose.
Okay.
And can I explain?
Sure, please do.
Sorry, it's not that I it I it's not that I want there to not be funding to go to schools because I think we understand that less funding to schools is never a good thing. I think that we have the responsibility as the AIB under the to to follow the parameters of the law, which is to issue the warning. And I think that we have the responsibility to the students to hold our districts accountable for at least not declining in progress. So while I I uh, you know, agree with the with the release of funds and while I certainly agree with the notice, I think it is um our responsibility to have a heavier line of accountability at this point on time on behalf of children.
Thank you. Well noted. Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I got those noted. Any opposition other than the one from Member Lynch? The ayes have it. Let's go on to the next item, Madam Executive Director.
You're on mute, Rachel.
Sorry. Thank you. Vice Chair Kerwin, did you have your hand raised?
I I just um uh uh I I just wanted to repeat my hope and expectation that we are go we will follow up uh in the not dis too distant future with these uh six LEAs who have clearly underperformed on the third grade uh literacy. So we need to have a discussion about how exactly we're going to do that. But uh we can, I think we have an obligation as a board to understand what's going on in these LEAs and uh what their challenges are with regard to their making progress.
Thank you. Madam Executive Director?
Yes, the next motion, uh, it's um item three B is release of funds approval for Talbot County Public Schools.
Do you have a comment from Member Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Problem. Um, I I just wanted to kind of um underscore what the vice chair had mentioned, but also to say, um, while I I agree in spirit with a lot of what Member Lynch said, I'm definitely want to see negative growth. Um, and and I agree with the with the vice chair saying as well, like zero to three percent is a challenge and we should be talking to those districts. I would also want to say just for the record and and to the public that I don't think that zero to three percent is enough anyway. And I think as we move forward into implementation, I think that we need to be more um uh cognizant of LEAs performance against the aligned metrics that we've established and all those benchmarks. And I want to make sure that um, you know, this was our first year talking about student performance. But as we move forward and now that we've had like the framework for these discussions and we've had um like kind of build a lot of infrastructure around how we're going to have these conversations. Um, it's my expectation moving forward into future years that um that those growth percentages become a lot more important. Um, and that there is a little that there is more weight behind them um as Member Lynch uh advocated for. So um just wanted to put that on the radar for the future. Um, I just I appreciate the spirit behind um the proposed amendment, but um given what Vice Chair Kerwin said, like in the first year, I can kind of see um I'm glad that we got the infrastructure around how to have this conversation. But um in the future years, I would like to also see um uh us putting each other to greater standards.
Uh, Member Werner.
Thank you. Um, I also wanted to echo the points that Member Robinson made. Um, I also agree with uh the vice chair and Member Lynch's points. Um, but I think that I just wanted to highlight that this is one piece of data and it's one angle of looking at it. And there's many ways that um we can look at the data and we've seen that. Um, you know, through our partnership with MSD and our joint meeting of all the different ways that you can unpack data. And where I have hesitation um to issue anything beyond a letter of notice is because of that, because it can be viewed from many different angles. And as much as we try to rank and and compare, every LEA has a different story and is coming from a different um starting place in FY twenty two. And I think it should be noted that some of those districts that have not made as much progress as we want. And I agree with Member Robinson that above three percent really isn't enough either. We we want to see as a state uh much higher performance. I I think it should be noted that some of those districts have also already been some of our higher performing districts in ELA grade three. So I I it it just, I think there needs to be some more um peeling back layers of that data and working together with both MSD and the LEAs to find what, how can we make all districts um more successful for our children and making more progress, but really understanding where they're all coming from um and the growth targets that they have.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Kerwin?
Yes, I I also want to uh pick up um on a point the chairman made because I think it's very important. There's uh we have to expect that MSD
I agree.
The primary uh entity that is holding LEAs accountable for academic progress. That's in their mission charter uh e- expectations. And we certainly are going to track how these LEAs are um are 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 doing and be prepared to take action as as appropriate for underperformance. But uh the the uh oversight and direct intervention on academic department department really does is the responsibility of MSD. And we probably have need to have further conversations with them about exactly how that's going to uh take place.
Um, thank you. Member Manko.
Yeah, I wanted to also pull on one final thread that um that Vice Chair Kerwin had mentioned. I, there's also further um exploration that needs to be done on all those districts that have seen double digit gains, especially, you know, Dorchester County with over twenty two percent gains and Harford County with over ten percent gains in math. Like there there are e- exemplars of um things that are going right with um, you know, blueprint implementation and with um with academic performance across the state. And um, you know, really leaning into that and learning from those LEAs to see what they're doing differently, um, you know, what 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 they attribute to uh the gains that they're seeing and, you know, if there are aspects of that that are replicable, um, I think is also an important um point to to lean on and 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 understand a little bit better.
Thank you. Um, Member Craig McQueen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to thank all of the LEAs for all your hard work that you're doing with our students day in and day out. And we know that you guys are working really hard with kids. But I just want to echo Member Werner in that we have to take a look at where we're starting from. Some of our counties that are excelling and doing really well, great work. We want to know what you're doing with your kiddos to get them to where they are. And for those school districts that are not meeting the mark, we want to know how we can help you. We know that you're working hard day in and day out with your kids, with your staff. So we want to hear from you. How can we help? And again, thank you for all your hard work with our students.
Thank you. Anyone else on this first motion? Okay. The next motion, um, and if we can put um item three B on the screen, is a release of fund approval for Talbot County. Um, and I'll read it, but it's I identical to the language for um the uh twenty one others that were approved under motion A. Uh, and this is after careful consideration of the recommendations of the AIB staff and based on the board's own independent review of all documents provided by Talbot County Public Schools. The motion is for the board to find that Talbot County Public Schools has met all requirements and authorized release of fiscal year twenty twenty six blueprint funds that are automatically withheld by law.
I so move. Now second to the motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion is now up for discussion amendments.
Mr. Chair, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Any other accusers? Let the record reflect that Member Warner indicated recusal. Any others? Seeing or hearing none? The motion is now before us. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. Thank you. Any further, sorry.
That's all right. The the next um motion is um related to um warnings.
Yeah. Want to read it?
Sure, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. So the first item C is Baltimore City Public Schools. This is a warning uh for Baltimore City Public Schools based on um the that they have not submitted um a assigned um career ladder that is an agreement between the school system and the local education association. The motion is after careful consideration of the recommendations of the AIB staff and based on the board's own independent review of all documents provided by Baltimore City Public Schools. The motion is for the board to find that the twenty twenty five career ladder an element of the blueprint for Maryland's Future Implementation Plan has either not been submitted or is not approvable and to issue a warning to Baltimore City Public Schools um that its blueprint for Maryland's Future Implementation Plan is not yet approvable and it is at risk of fiscal year twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven blueprint funds that are automatically withheld by law not being released if the twenty twenty five career ladder is not provided and approvable on or before February first, twenty twenty six. And further, for the board to send a notice letter to Baltimore City Public Schools regarding concerns the board has about school level expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty six. So that last piece refers to Baltimore City as one of the LEAs that had coded zero percent for at least one program. That is the motion.
I'll move the motion if you need a, we need a
Yes.
I so move the second to the motion.
I'll second. I'll second.
Kerwin is the second, so let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. The motion is now before us. Any further discussion? Unreadiness? Was there an unreadiness, Madam Executive?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, all right. The motion is now before us. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion is so approved.
Okay, the last motion is for Prince George's. And it is identical to Baltimore City's motion. So after careful consideration of the recommendations of AIB staff and based on the board's own independent review of all documents provided by Prince George's County Public Schools, the motion is for the board to find that its 2025 career ladder an element of the Blueprint Implementation Plan has either not been submitted or is not approvable and to issue a warning to Prince George's County Public Schools that its implementation plan is not yet approvable, and it is at risk of the fiscal year '26 and '27 funds that are automatically withheld by law not being released if its 2025 career ladder is not approvable on or before February 1st, 2026. And further, for the board to send a notice letter to Prince George's County Public Schools regarding concerns the board has about school level expenditures for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. All right, so move. Second to the motion.
I second.
Okay, move and properly second. The motion is now before us. Any unreadiness, concerns, or recusal, please indicate at this time.
Member Robinson.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any further concerns, questions, or unreadiness? Okay, the motion is now before us for approval. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, with the exception of the recusal, the motion is so approved. Thank you.
Uh, Member Lynch?
Yes, I, I just want to note that both last year and this year, we issued warnings to districts for not complying with creating their and finalizing their career ladders. And I understand that it's a matter of, it's very, very distinctly in the law, and it's, did you do it and did you not? I wish that we had taken a stronger stance earlier today when we made decisions about whether or not you made sufficient progress in issuing that same level that we feel comfortable with around something like career ladders when it comes to, are more children making progress or are they not?
Thank you. Are there any other no, sir? Discussion? Well, Mr. Chair, that concludes the items on the agenda.
Have we lost the chair?
I think, I think we may. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Let me again, thank the staff and everyone who's worked to get us to this point today. I know it was challenging over the holidays, but your work is greatly, greatly appreciated. Let me also thank the members of the AIB board for your diligence, your hard work. And these were not easy decisions. They are challenging at times. But I think that we have placed ourselves in a position whereby we can continue to monitor and look at the progress as we go forward, but realizing that there are some additional things, hurdles that we need to get over. And we hopefully will have an opportunity to do that by ongoing monitoring of the progress to make. There will be a series of letters that will be out. There will be a series of meetings with the local boards and the superintendents to make sure that we're all on the same track. Also indicated that we need to loop in properly the State Board of Education to make sure what we're doing is consistent with our ability to properly monitor that and ensure that we have the compliance we want. I also indicated that there may be things outside of the areas that we looked at today that we may want to talk to some of the individual boards about, local districts about because we don't have to wait until the end of the year for a progress or challenge or issue to come before us for us to have these serious conversations. So with that, if there are any questions or concerns or comments individual board members like to make before we adjourn? Okay, the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.